All right, I'm gaveling because they've already taken the gavel away from me. I don't have a gavel up here. Anyway, let's call the meeting to order. Welcome, good evening, to the Newport Beach City Council regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. Today is December 10th. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
We are honored this evening to have the invocation by Reverend Keith Hurwitz of the Soul Center, Orange County, and followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Muldoon.
Good evening. And we just take a moment, we take a moment, a reflective, a meditative, a prayerful moment to turn within, to allow ourselves to relax and open our hearts, our bodies, our minds, our souls, to the infinite grace, the infinite beauty, the light, the love, and the intelligence that governs the universe. We take a moment and we open to that divine beauty, intelligence, that which created every galaxy, which illuminates every star, which orbits every planet, beats every heart, as stated in all scriptures and all religions around the world, that we are all created, born in the image and the very likeness of the divine, that there is a divine spark of light within us that is calibrated in pure light, in pure love, in pure truth, and that we've all been imbued and endowed with inalienable rights to bless, to move into a field of blessings that are the very nature of a life. It is abundant and fraught with this light, that which we call God, or the universe, or the Creator. We open to that abundant field. We take a moment as we bring that into our awareness and into our hearts. And we bless this evening, we bless it with truth, with light, with love, with grace. We move into a field of divine cooperation. And just as every politician takes a vow to uphold the best and highest for all constituents, we take our vows as individuals to do the same. We take a moment, we bless this meeting this evening with order, with light, with love, with reverence and respect and kindness and integrity. We bless each council member, we bless the mayor, we bless our beloved city of Newport Beach. We bless it all with goodness and prosperity and joy and wellness for everyone, for the highest good, win-win for everything and everyone. Truly grateful that this evening is an evening dedicated to the perseverance of truth and liberty and happiness for everyone, all of those in the city and around the world, all spiritual communities, all governments. We bless it all, we let it all be good. This is our inalienable right to speak these words of blessings. We bathe in them, we allow them to be, and we simply agree to them by saying, "And so it is." Amen.
Please face the flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you Reverend Hurwitz, that was a beautiful invocation. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Okay, now is the time for city council announcements and new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas and oral reports from the city council on committee activities. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the operations committee of the Orange County Sanitation District and also the ad hoc committee on homelessness. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe this is a meeting for other things, so I'm gonna just whip through this. I don't want to bore anybody, but we did our job. We worked the various committees and so on and so forth over the week, and it was successful and just look forward to this further on in this meeting.
Okay. Mr. Muldoon.
Let's go before he wants it to be done, quickly. The last council meeting, I asked Representative from JetSuite X to join us this evening, not to take away from the main event, but we have an expert here who's gonna talk a little bit about the lengths that JetSuite X has done, the extra mile they've gone, no pun intended, more like 2,000 feet, to make our skies quieter. I believe, just as we recently thanked Delta Airlines in op-ed for their commitment to make our skies quieter, that we should reward and thank those who are good neighbors, and so I'm excited to hear some interesting findings that JetSuite X has and how they potentially could change the paradigm in which we view this issue. Thank you. And Merry Christmas to everybody.
Very nice. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I wanted to announce that on Thursday evening, there is a wildland fire community meeting at Oasis at 6:00 PM. We've had one of those, and I know it's starting to rain, but those of us who are really concerned about wildfires, it's a really helpful meeting. I've also met twice with Assemblywoman Cadi Petri-Norris, once with Simone Jurgis, our Community Development Director, asking for help with our housing issues. Simone and I also attended the Orange County Forum 2020 Housing Outlook meeting, and at the last council meeting, it was attended by students from Corona Del Mar High School who are in the youth and government program, and subsequently Will and I attended their meeting and answered their questions. One of their emails that they sent to their instructor after our meeting was that we all looked like we were probably in our 50s, so I thanked them and told them that, and Will explained that he actually is still a millennial, so it was really interesting talking to them about that. We also served lunch to the volunteers at Oasis for their annual luncheon, and I attended the Mariners Mile Scoping Meeting. And for future of agenda items, I'm not going to pull item seven, but it is regarding traffic, and I'd just like to make sure that we get our traffic discussion into a study session sooner rather than later, so that we can talk about whether we want to establish a commission or add it to the planning commission or whatever, because we keep getting things coming to us that are about traffic, and also that our emergency council be convened as soon as possible.
Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, today I attended an awards luncheon with Public Works Director Dave Webb and staff members Tony Brine, Brad Summers, Robert Silva, and Patrick Arsenaga. This was an annual awards program of the American Public Works Association Southern California Chapter. Once again, the city of Newport Beach, yeah, good, there's a slide up there, was selected for an award this time in the area of traffic, mobility, and beautification for the improvements made to the Bayside Drive roadway. Bayside Drive is the main access to multiple neighborhoods, a retail center, and to Babo Island. The corridor experiences a high volume of bicycle and pedestrian usage, traffic signal improvements, traffic calming elements, improvements to bicycle and pedestrian facilities, retaining walls, landscaping, pavement rehabilitation. These were all included in this award-winning project, so I want to congratulate Dave and his staff on another job really well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem.
Yeah, the youth and government event over at Corona Del Mar was really fantastic, minus the "you look 50" comment. And then we had the, and then I was able to go over to Pacifica Christian High School and give a proclamation to a young lady named Hannah Novakovic, and Hannah recently won a philanthropy award, charity award, at a national level for Orange County, and she was truly fantastic. So giving it to her in front of all of her fellow students at Pacifica was great. And then we had our District Seven General Plan Listen and Learn update discussion. My suspicion is that either our first, certainly by our second meeting, will be having a study session entirely devoted to RENA and what we will be doing on that front, so come on back in January.
All right, and I, speaking about RENA, our favorite subject, for those of you don't know, it's regional housing, oh, thank you, I just have my gavel come back, relates to regional housing and the new actions that have been taken, and the purpose of my announcement is to just give an update of what's been transpiring at your city council and your city government, because we are pedaling as fast as we can on this subject. Last December 4th was the General Plan Steering Committee meeting, which I participate on, and we heard a presentation by staff on the need now to, recommended need to form a General Plan Advisory Committee to provide input and policy on the future housing element. And you may remember that at the last meeting in November of the city council, I requested staff to prepare an action plan and come back to council, and I believe it's coming back at the first meeting in January, January 14th, on staff's recommendations to council on how the council should react to the imposition of 4,832 housing units that we have to zone for in the city of Newport Beach. So this is caused, this issue is causing consternation across all 400-plus cities in California, but specifically in our city, we are wrestling with this number of potentially 5,000, and that's not a firm number yet, that it could go up. So in any event, the General Plan Committee members are legitimately concerned that the 4,832 RENA numbers imposed by the state has completely derailed the city's attempt to update our general plan. As you know, we initiated the general plan process, we are now in the listen and learn phase of it, and now the RENA number, the housing portion of our general plan update process has been more or less hijacked by the state mandated housing numbers, and so the Steering Committee is requesting that the city council reexamine the general plan update process and whether the city should redirect its focus. And I agree that that is probably wise to do at this point, there's so much confusion on the housing portion of how that fits in. It's not only housing, it's traffic or circulation, it's land use planning, it's also called, there's a new requirement called environmental justice, all this relates to housing, and these elements need to be looked at individually. So as I said, at the last city council meeting, I asked that staff draft and present an action plan on what are our next steps as a city to address the state mandate for these additional housing units. This is an extraordinarily high number of units that will greatly impact and transform our city, and I'm sure if you have friends in other cities, we're not alone, the numbers are huge, and everyone is wrestling with this, and so we need to step back and find a path forward in working with staff. So therefore, just to update council, I'm requesting that staff include in their upcoming action plan, that will come back to us in January, that we provide a review of the general plan update process, where we are now, and what is, what does it look like going forward, a determination of which elements, those are like chapters or sections of the general plan, do we need to move forward on, and which elements can be deferred for now, delayed. So the Steering Committee also would like to recommend for council to determine a new policy committee that will be involved in recommending policy to the city council on the elements that we need to update. As I say, that's housing, circulation, environmental justice, and land use. So we will have to devote a great deal of time to January, on the January agenda, to wrestle with these issues, because we need to give guidance to our general plan, Steering Committee, update Steering Committee, and determine a course of action going forward. So thank you, staff, for that. And I think I have an announcement to make here. So the next two of the last seven listen and learn sessions, tomorrow night at Bonita Creek Community Center, Mr. Muldoon's District Four, and December 12th, Thursday, is Marina Park Community, District One, my district, and I encourage even residents who don't live in District Four or One to please come. We did discuss this at the last Steering Committee meeting last Wednesday, that while attendance has been pretty good, depending on the district, I think Councilmember Brenner, you had quite a few, had about 60 people, so it's very good, that we need to engage our citizenry on these important issues. So I encourage tomorrow night, the presentations are the same, the activities are the same, that your input is really, really critical. So again, tomorrow, and Wednesday night and Thursday night, and the time is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. All right, I think that's it on my announcements. I think that's it, was I was gonna say. Okay, now, public comments on city council announcements or oral reports, not on, this is just for what we've just transpired, nothing on non-agenda items, this is just on what we discussed. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Okay, well, you will move on. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through nine. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay, thank you, council. Any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Duffield? Mr. Muldoon?
Councilmember Brenner?
Mr. Hurdman?
I have none.
Mayor Potem?
I have none.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yes, so I move approval of the consent calendar with item number one showing the updated minutes that were in the, our packets up here and then at the door, as well as an amended resolution for item number four, which was also in our packets and at the door.
All right, do we have public comments on the consent calendar? Please come forward.
Soon-to-be former Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Item four on the consent calendar has to do with amending the fire paramedic subscription program that we have in Newport Beach. I don't think anybody reading the agenda would tell from the listing that is here on this blue sheet what it is you are planning to amend tonight, what changes the staff is asking to have made. There is a handout acknowledging that the staff has discovered a major error in what they were planning to have you approve tonight, would have vastly changed how the program works. I appreciate that they discovered that, but they are still recommending that you make tonight substantial changes in the program, how it works, for instance, changes in eligibility of businesses to subscribe to the program, and other changes. I realize that they want their changes to be effective January 1st, however, the boo-boo was a major one, and I'm not sure that the other stuff is all on the up and up, so I would suggest that you continue this item until a future meeting. None of this has been publicly discussed, what the changes are that you're being asked to make, or what you will be making tonight. I would suggest you continue this to a future meeting so that you can have a study session on how the fire paramedic program works. It has not been discussed publicly for probably 20 years. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the consent calendar? Please come forward. Seeing none. Do we have Mr. Fire Chief here? Do you want to come up and speak about this, just to clarify, settle the issue, please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, Jeff Boils, your Fire Chief. There were a couple of additions to the proposal, the changes we were making started with just reducing the amount of business or business residents, not residents, but the workers of a business to 150. And what we did find with Mr. Mosher's changes is, I'll read you the change so that we could clarify, resident members that subscribe to the program, if an accident or injury occurs on their resident for the actual subscriber themselves or their guest of their property, then they are covered under the subscription program. I think where some of the confusion and the wording came in was if it occurs to the subscriber themselves off of the residence, then they're still covered under the subscription.
Okay, that seems very straightforward. All right, thank you, Chief, I appreciate it. All right, seeing no further questions, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, what we've all been waiting for.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered-
Oh, I went too fast.
-to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Tina Babajonians. I live in front of the West Oceanfront parking lot, and over the last six months, there's been about 20 or so people that have moved in with their vans, so it's just kind of uncomfortable because they have taken city cones and they reserve parking lots for themselves and, or parking spaces, and they all have the blue city passes, and they put their lawn chairs out and put their laundry out in the windows, and just wanted to bring it to the city's attention.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. We'll be right on that. Next comment, please.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher again, and I have two non-agenda comments. First one is a positive one. I've noticed that the council and the planning commission videos on the city website now have a download button so that people can store the video and view it offline. I think that's a benefit to the public, and I'd like to thank whoever is responsible for that. My second comment has to do with the ethics of the city as opposed to individual city officials accepting gifts. By way of background, this Thursday, the Coastal Commission will be reviewing a permit that many think is for a bad, public-view-blocking bluff-faced home at China Cove in Corona Del Mar, something that our planning commission endorsed in 2017 in a narrowly split decision despite our planning staff assuring them that it was eminently approvable. The public recently learned that back in October, apparently wanting to ensure local staff support would continue, the developer approached the city planning staff with a cash offer of $50,000 that seems to be contingent upon the construction getting approved. The $50,000, which you would have to later approve, would be used to improve public access and views elsewhere in our city, even though the project, we are assured, has no impact on access or views. And the money indeed generated a fresh letter from the city staff to the Coastal Commission, adding the $50,000 to the list of the project's virtues. I don't think such spontaneous cash offers are common, but I can tell you that a number of your constituents see a difference between gifts made to the city out of the goodness of one's heart and payments that are made for or as a reward for favorable treatment. I'm not sure I can distinguish this from the development agreements you sometimes approve, but both create a sense that Newport Beach is a city which, instead of having rules that apply uniformly to all, has rules that can be bent depending on how much you're willing to pay. I trust that's not a sense this council wants this city to be known for. We also learned yesterday that the China Cove applicant is now being represented before the Coastal Commission by a former Assistant City Attorney, now in private practice, who as a city employee provided what was supposed to be unbiased advice to the planning commission on this project during their review of it. I realize you have no control at all over what former city employees do, but I'm pretty sure that too will strike some of your constituents as slightly unsavory behavior. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? I'll come back to that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Corey Ferguson. I've been a resident of Orange County for more than 30 years. I'm currently a captain for JSX, one of the commercial operators out of the John Wayne Airport. I've been type rated by the FAA in 15 different airplanes, including the 27, 37, 47, 57, 67, 787, and I've flown out of the John Wayne Airport since 1971, so better than 48 years out of John Wayne. JSX is one of the newest operators out of John Wayne, and we've had a great deal of success at John Wayne, and we hope to continue that. One of the reasons that we have been successful is we're serving the needs of the local community, and we're doing it with the quietest aircraft that is employed at the John Wayne Airport in commercial passenger operations. That's the Embraer 135 and 145 aircraft. What we have done is provided a noise report that was commissioned by our company to show you the relationship of our aircraft noise footprint on the community versus the noise footprint of some of the aircraft that I've flown in the past for other carriers. And that noise report shows that the 737, which is the typical airplane being operated right now, has an equivalent of 38 times the noise energy footprint versus the aircraft that we are flying today. And what I'd like to share with you today is an understanding of what we are doing to be better neighbors for the local community, and how we are employing a different takeoff profile that allows our aircraft to get higher and quieter over your city. And what I've got is a handout that would help you understand exactly what we're doing that is different than other carriers. So the profile that we've got up on the screen in front of you, on the left portion is showing our current, are you able to see in front of you? Okay, on the left side of your screen is showing the JSX departure profile, and basically what we're doing is flying up to 3,000 feet right now and then accelerating and cleaning up the aircraft with flaps and gear. What we have proposed and we have been doing recently is climbing up to 4,000 feet before we begin to accelerate and clean up the aircraft, and it gets us significantly higher over the coastline and reduces our noise signature and footprint. And I see that my time is coming up, and so I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. First of all, I'd like to echo Jim Mosher's sentiments regarding this Coastal Commission hearing. If you don't know about it, you should look it up, look at the comments, look at everything about it. It smells bad. I don't know how it got to this point, and it's being recommended by the Coastal Commission staff. It's shocking. There are many, many letters from residents in there against it. The crux of it, in part, is the concession that the developers offering is a glass screen in front of a pool at the street level, which they most certainly will cover with potted plants as soon as the development is done and block the view. Second thing, while I appreciate the quietness of the JetSuite X takeoffs, the airport has recently offered them the opportunity to increase the amount of passenger traffic if they will move out of the ACI terminal and into the main terminal, where they can go through normal security like the rest of us do, and that has not been accepted yet. We'd look a lot more favorably on them as a good neighbor if they would move into the main terminal so that their passengers can go through the same security as the rest of us, as opposed to the nearly nonexistent security in the ACI terminal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Ms. Brenner, did you want to speak?
Yes, I'd like to say on the project that Mr. Mosher and Mr. Klob are referencing on Ocean Boulevard above China Cove, that's in my district, and I was actually surprised about the letter that went to the Coastal Commission with the $50,000 that they're offering. I believe that's been approved by Planning Commission. If it's approved by the Coastal Commission, can I, as council member, ask that that be called up to us for review?
The answer is no. Right now, the project was approved by the city, it's on appeal to the Coastal Commission, so they'll resolve this appeal one way or the other, approve the project- So they'll resolve this appeal one way or the other, approve the project, modify the project, or deny the project. Once that's done, the project is beyond our reach, if you will. The applicant could proceed forward.
It was approved by the planning commission. It never came to us, did it?
That's correct. So it was appealed directly from the planning commission to the coastal commission.
So if we had asked that it be pulled up to us before it went to the coastal commission, we could have done that.
Yes, that's correct. You could have made changes or theoretically denied the project.
But now we have no ability to review this project.
That's correct.
Mr. Muldoon.
I have two quick questions I wanted to ask of the expert. Sir, I'm just taking the podium really quickly. Can the... What's the reduction in noise from the old procedure to the new procedure?
Unfortunately, the new procedure was put in place after this current noise report was produced. So I can't give you quantitative numbers. But what I can tell you is the average altitude over the coastline using the new procedure is approximately 1,200 feet higher than what we were before. And we were leading the height of other carriers on this departure. So it's significantly higher.
And my final question, and thank you for this. Can the other airlines, many of which being larger planes, can they do this legally and safely?
The answer is yes, they can. The longer answer is it is going to be harder for them to do it because of, frankly, the mass of the larger organizations. And that's why we can do it relatively quickly, because we are a small organization and nimble.
When you say the mass, you mean the bureaucracy, not the size of the plane?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Sir, I'd encourage you, and first of all, congratulations on those noise numbers. Obviously, that would be something that the city would respond positively to. I've encouraged other colleagues of the company to present to our aviation committee, to the technology subcommittee of our aviation committee, because I think they would be interested in getting into the meat of those numbers, so...
On December 20th?
Is there a date?
Mayor Dixon, Mayor Dixon. We do have a technical subcommittee meeting scheduled for the 20th, and we have invited JetSuite X to come in.
Oh, perfect. Okay, very good. So you're already in the queue.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. I'd like to go back to the Corona Del Mar property. Is Mr. Campbell or do you just want to come back and just... Or someone? You're covering a lot of territory. So could you explain this $50,000 contribution, please?
Certainly. The developer, the property owner, Mr. Ginsburg, is making a voluntary offer to the city to do some improvements for public access and public views. That was a voluntary offer that they made to the city. I wrote a letter to the coastal commission suggesting that that wouldn't necessarily be a problem, but we'd obviously have to bring it to the council before it could be accepted. The staff report for the coastal commission is not contingent upon that offer going through. So I did speak to the developer's representative. They still intend to make that voluntary donation to the city if the council's willing to accept it at a future meeting.
So if I just understand the sequence of events, that was presented after their project was already submitted to the coastal commission?
The project was appealed, and it's been kind of in limbo for the last eighteen months to two years now. And I'm not sure what motivated the applicant to do this, but I think they wanted to at least get the coastal commission to take an action on this. And I think it's achieved that result. It's going to a hearing tomorrow.
But there wasn't an opportunity to influence action by the planning commission?
Oh, no. No, this was began in October of this year.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Brenner, you had a question?
I think for future reference, it's important for us to know about this process because the appeal bypassed us and went directly to the coastal commission. Could we have at any time taken action on this? Could we have reviewed it and made a recommendation to the coastal commission?
So the way the process... And we're probably need to cut it off, comment on this, because it's not on the agenda for this evening. But the way the process worked is it required planning commission approval. Planning commission approved it, didn't require city council approval. Someone could have appealed it to the city council, or you could have called it up for review at that time. That was not done, and it was appealed to coastal commission. And so once it's there, it's no longer under the authority of the city. And I think this $50,000 was done after the planning commission had already approved it, probably hoping to get some, you know, coastal look favorably on the project. But this isn't on the agenda, so we'll probably need to wrap up discussion.
Okay. Any... I guess there's no other comments up here. All right, well, we will proceed to the next item on the agenda. So this is the time for the city council to conduct the election?
Actually, I get to do something first.
Oh, I'm not speaking. Okay.
This is actually the time we get to thank our mayor for her service. Traditionally, it's mayor pro tem, and I will do that in just a moment. But before we do that, our supervisor has sent Tim Whitaker up. Tim, if you wouldn't mind coming forward to present a thanks on behalf of Supervisor Steele.
Madam Mayor, could you come forward, please?
Certainly.
And welcome, Madam Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council, City Manager, Staff, and Residents of Newport Beach. It's an honor and pleasure to be here today on behalf of the Vice Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, your supervisor in the Second District, Michelle Steele. And would you folks mind if I face the audience with her?
We had someone do that last meeting.
Diane really gave him a rough time for doing it.
Mayor Dixon.
Yes, sir.
It's been an honor and a pleasure on behalf of the Vice Chair... This is coming from her, and for me, too, because I work with you regularly on her behalf. This last year, we covered a lot of ground. And the city, under your tutelage, did yeoman's work with the amendments to many things over at John Wayne and other items, the homeless issue, all sorts of things, not just yourself. But you folks have got to know, there's some great DNA behind you here in your city council. And we have ten cities in our district, and Newport Beach just shines above. You know, not just from the city council and the mayor's staff as well, but the residents. You are a very engaged city, and we do receive many calls on your behalf and service them as well. And that's nice, because that's what makes the community thrive and be successful. You have been the head of that in a very special year this year. And she wants you to know she really appreciates the many, many hours that you've put in, yourself, too, Councilman Erdman, being with the airport, and as well as Grace and the city attorney. They've spent many, many hours over at the Hall of Administration trying to hammer out things on behalf of Newport and stand tall for Newport when it comes to John Wayne. Your supervisor is aligned with your city council when it comes to John Wayne and with its residents when it comes to John Wayne.
We are grateful for that.
Well, she just really appreciates all that you've done. So it's an honor to be able to present this to you for your year of hard work as leadership at the helm of this fantastic city council and very capable city staff. And so on behalf of the Vice Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Orange, Mayor Dixon, this is an honor of your distinguished service to the residents of Newport Beach. Congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Supervisor Steele. She is a great friend of Newport Beach, and we are very grateful. And she knows when we had our public meeting on the airport issue, 500 residents saw how much she cares about Newport Beach, and she's always there for us. And I'm very grateful to her as well. So it's a mutual admiration society.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, but this is your moment. So we're going to stop on my bus for a moment, relishing your leadership, because you've got a couple minutes left. And lastly, to the residents on behalf of the Vice Chairman, she wants to make sure that I wish each and every one of you a blessed Merry Christmas or Happy Hanukkah. Have a safe New Year and looking forward to 2020. Thank you so much.
So as mayor pro tem, I get to say just a few words and then hand the mic over for our mayor to give her closing remarks. But I'll just say, a year ago, Mayor Dixon started her second term, noting that there is, quote, "much, much more that binds us than divides us." And that was a common refrain throughout 2019 for this council. Through the hard work of people inside and outside this room, we took part in a year where crime decreased, our budget was balanced with a strong surplus, our pension-funded status increased, roads were paved, and aging infrastructure received attention. As was just mentioned, Diane, Jeff, and Kevin led the city's efforts mitigating the airport noise. We opened up the Corona Del Mar Fire Station and Library. We've made our opening strides on addressing homelessness, and we started the general plan update process. We moved the city's business forward professionally under Mayor Dixon's watch. And so it's with my pleasure as mayor pro tem to present Mayor Dixon with...
Oh, how lovely.
...this mounted gavel to remember 2019.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Let me see if I can get through some remarks here. As I complete my second term as mayor of this exceptional city, I'd like to share a few thoughts. But first, I want to offer congratulations, well, eventually, to our new mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, in a few moments, for their service to the city and our mayor pro tem for his outstanding service to the city during this past year. I have great confidence in your leadership, and I look forward to a very productive year ahead. I want to thank my fellow council members for their hard work and dedication to Newport Beach. My top... My one top-line goal this year was to restore civility and collegiality among our council. And I'm pleased to tell you that your council is high-functioning, hard-working, respectful of each other, and committed to achieving what's best for Newport Beach and its residents. This council works hard for the people of Newport Beach, and it shows. We all, and I mean residents, staff, and your council, were busy this year, as the mayor pro tem just highlighted. We created several ad hoc committees, Committees on Homelessness, Election Reform, Library Lecture Hall, Business Improvement Districts, and General Plan Update Steering Committee. These committees are working hard to address pressing issues and community needs. Their work will continue into the new year. Additionally, I continue to be amazed and grateful at the dedication and hard work of our residents. They serve countless hours providing their knowledge and expertise on our standing commissions and committees like aviation, harbor, arts, finance, library, parks, beaches, and recreation, and planning. Much important work was done this year. A restructured aviation committee to address critical issues related to John Wayne Airport. And extensive harbor municipal code revisions are now underway. Special trees on Babal Island addressed capably by residents and business owners and our public, our Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission. And importantly, it's important to myself and many of us up here as we passed a balanced budget with a substantial surplus and received recognition as a AAA credit with it, for the city for a AAA credit rating. And while also funding an aggressive pay-down of our unfunded pension gap thanks to our hard-working finance committee, this involved many hours of staff and committee time to formulate the best options. These excess payments that we've been making over the last five years, since 2015, four years since 2015, have saved the city interest costs of nearly $115 million to be realized as savings to this city over the next 20 years because of actions taken by this council, prior councils, our finance committee, and our finance, and our staff, and our finance staff. These savings reflect rigorous fiscal management by your council and is an extraordinary achievement, and I'm very proud of that. And our citizen committees continue to work on many more issues that touch nearly every resident. Our homeless task force, led most capably by Mayor Pro Tem and Mr. Avery and Ms. Brenner, to identify solutions to this ever-vaccine issue that confronts our city and many other cities. The sculpture garden installations and art exhibits, harbor dredging, and a new library lecture hall that is moving forward with preliminary public and private funding commitments. There's never a shortage of projects or issues in our city, but we stay focused on continual improvement of our infrastructure and the distinct amenities that create value for our community and property owners. Many concern residents consistently, like you are tonight, come out to our council meetings or those of the commissions and committees to share their advice and expertise. The wisdom of our residents often shows us viable alternatives, and we are better for it. A big thank you to city staff. There is a lot on your plate, I suspect more than normal, with the projects I've already mentioned and so much more. New issues related to recent laws affecting local control, land use planning, zoning, and other significant issues will be addressed in the year ahead as part of our general plan update. One way or the other, we have to. Newport Beach enjoys the quality of life we have here in no small part because of city staff's commitment to go above and beyond the merely satisfactory at all levels. I am pleased we continue to take important actions to promote public safety and to invest in the city's future. We added one police officer position to restore the department's staffing to the pre-recession level and to tacitly acknowledge that crime sadly exists in our community. It rises and falls over the months of the year, but new state laws reducing prison sentences, loosening parole requirements, and downgrading felony crimes to misdemeanors are contributing to rising crime rates across Orange County. We have the finest men and women serving in our police department, and I am proud of their commitment, hard work, and their personal sacrifices to keep our city safe. The department's resourceful efforts to address criminal activity in our neighborhoods and its nationally-recognized cold case resolutions are second to none. Meanwhile, our two fire stations, one completed on budget and the other in process, improvements to our parks and roadways, our water and wastewater infrastructure investments, are all actions that improve public safety and response, improve the city's quality of life, and your property values. I want to especially recognize and thank our city manager, Grace Leong. I no longer say "new," but I want to recognize and thank you, who has seamlessly transitioned into our city. She keeps us moving in the right direction professionally and efficiently. Thank you, Grace, for hitting the ground running and making our work efficient and for leading your staff with graceful rigor. We are in good hands. Thank you very much. I have enjoyed the greatest honor of public service in our city, serving as your mayor twice in five years. I am humbled by the deep commitment to our city by our residents, our city staff, and our council. We all work together, we discuss, we disagree, we debate to ensure that the city runs efficiently with fiscal prudence and an operating model that best serves our residents and business owners. Having completed my term, I am delighted to turn the mayor's gavel over to the next mayor, and I'll make my comments later about who that might be. And I look forward to continuing to serve the people of Newport Beach in whatever role fate has in store. Thank you very much. All right, now I say the city council will now consider the annual mayoral appointment. So I will turn the floor over to the city clerk to conduct the mayoral election.
This is the time for the election of the mayor. All members of the city council are on an equal basis to nominate and elect. Note, there are seven mayor and seven mayor-pro-tem nameplates that have been created for the reorganization process. The same procedure will also be followed for the selection of the mayor-pro-tem. Nominations do not require a second. They are not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and a majority vote is required to elect. The motion to close nominations does require a second. It is not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and requires a two-thirds vote. If there is more than one nomination, the voting will be done by paper ballot, and the results will be read at the conclusion of the balloting. If there is only one nomination, the voting will be done by oral vote. Nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations?
I would like to take a second here. I feel obligated. I actually talked him into it, so running for this job. And thank God he took me up on it. So I'd like at this time to say that I'm very honored to nominate a very sharp, humble, hard-working, loving husband, and awesome dad, Will O'Neill, for mayor of Newport Beach.
Move to close nominations?
Is there a second to close nominations? They're seconded by Councilmember Dixon at the moment. So, all in favor?
Did I? I thought Brenner did it.
Oh, did Councilmember Brenner? Okay. Okay. We did not do public comment yet. Is there any public comment on the nominations for mayor? Seeing none, the nominations are... Excuse me. Is there a vote for closing of the nominations? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous. Do any council members wish to have any discussion on the nominee?
Seeing none?
Seeing none. All in favor of Councilmember Will O'Neill becoming the next mayor? Please raise your hand. That was unanimous. Congratulations, Mayor O'Neill. If you could please take your seat.
We have to do some musical chairs here real quickly. All right.
We'll be doing that a bit tonight, switching chairs. So... So this is the time for the city council to conduct the election of the Mayor Pro Tem. So nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations?
Yes, I will nominate Mr. Avery, Councilmember Avery.
Second. Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
Can I just say, I wanted to say a little bit more than what I just said. I am delighted to nominate Mr. Avery, Councilmember Avery, for his outstanding work on this council for the last two years? Two years? Three years? Time flies when you're having fun. And it's a pleasure to see you become Mayor Pro Tem. I wholeheartedly nominate you for that role.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging me.
All right, this is the motion to close debate. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none? It was unanimous. Now, this is the time to vote on Mr. Avery becoming Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Avery, congratulations as Mayor Pro Tem.
I think I'm going to move here. I think I am. Let me get all my...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to note that the youngest got to keep their seats while the others move.
That's comfortable. All right. We'll just take a moment. Okay, so with that, we will be choosing seating arrangements. As a reminder, I'm just going to... I'm going to just run through this real quickly. The remainder of the city council will seat themselves in the remaining seats. Per City Council Policy A1, members of the city council should be seated at the city council table with senior council members having first choice of seats. When there is an equal seniority among members of the city council, selection of city seats shall be made by the council member who received the highest margin of victory percentage in their most recent election. The first person to choose is Councilmember Muldoon. Are you comfortable?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Councilmember Dixon?
Well, I was just thinking, I was going to be here next to Ms. Brenner, but...
Okay. So it looks like she's probably going to be taking that seat. Mr. Duffield?
I think I am.
Okay. Mr. Duffield, will you be selecting the seat you're about to move to? Yeah. All right, and then Councilmember Hurdman, are you comfortable? Or would you like to take Councilmember Brenner's seat?
Oh, no. I'm fine.
Okay. All right, and then, before we get to the mayor's remarks, now that we are in the proper order, this is the time to take a city council picture down in front. So everyone, remember the order? We're going to go back down there.
Squeeze in. Okay, squeeze in.
Mayor Will.
Okay, look this way. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. And they probably want a photo, too.
So let me start by saying thank you to my colleagues for this honor. Thank you to the voters of Newport Beach for the privilege of sitting up here on the dais with my fellow colleagues on the city council. Thank you to my friends and family who are all here tonight, especially, and those who are watching online. You've been with me every step of the way. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. Most of all, thank you to my wife Jenny and my two young kids, who put up with the early mornings and the late nights that come along with this service opportunity, who have gotten phenomenal at throwing candy at the Balboa Island Parade. And I just can't even imagine taking this journey without you, so thank you. I was reading a book recently where they described how biologists discuss the tallest oak tree in a forest. They say that an oak tree doesn't become the tallest just because it's born from the hardest acorn. It requires trees not to have blocked its sunlight. It needed to have been in rich and fertile soil. It needed a bunny not to come along and eat its bark when it's a sapling. And it needed a lumberjack not to cut it before it hit maturity. Cities are a bit like that. In their great book, the late Robert Gardner and his daughter and our former mayor Nancy Gardner discussed, pre-dredging, that the Newport Harbor was a bunch of mud flats, sandbars, sand islands, and swamps. And it even took the city of Newport Beach a couple of decades to actually annex in Corona Del Mar and Balboa Island. But fortunately, back then, we had pioneers like Joe Beek, who was our first harbor master. He sat on the first library board. He sat on the first Newport Harbor High School board. He developed Beacon Bay and Harbor Island. And of course, he started the everlasting Balboa Ferry. Now, in over a century, councils in our community have addressed and tried to make the right decisions when it comes to internal and external pressures. And over that century, through that community building, we really have created the shining city on the hill that is Newport Beach. In the coming year, I intend on emphasizing three overarching goals. The first is, get the fundamentals right. We will continue to set and expect the highest standards from our public safety officials. We will ensure that they have the proper training, equipment, and tools to keep us all safe. And we will continue to set aside money for maintenance and replacement of our fire stations and police station. And we will make sure that this year, we continue down the path to replace the Lido Fire Station itself. We will also ensure that basic core infrastructure is maintained and replaced. Our water and sewer lines remain top priorities, and pavement replacement will continue. And because you have a very young mayor, I will say, we will certainly continue down the path of a renewed emphasis on our parks programs as well as a deeper relationship with our school district. And we will continue to approach our unfunded pension liabilities in a way that continues to increase our pensions-funded status at a time when we see that most of our neighboring cities go in the opposite direction. Second, we will need to respond to external pressures in ways that we really haven't in many, many years. First and foremost, we must address the housing dictates that Sacramento's legislation and the Southern California Association of Governments votes have placed in front of us. This will require substantial community involvement, staff time and resources, and council cohesion. And we must come together regionally to address the growing homelessness problem. While we have made strides this year in Newport Beach, much remains to be done. We must additionally remain vigilant, expressing our concerns about the way Sacramento has approached public safety and unfunded mandates. And we must remain equally vigilant when we seek to mitigate airport noise and fund our harbor dredging operations. And third, and something we're going to have a lot of fun with, we will celebrate people and groups that give of their time and talents for the betterment of our city. We have ladies at Oasis Senior Center who volunteer their time, waking up in the morning, going down and calling homebound seniors just so that they have someone to talk to in the morning. We have retirees at the Newport Harbor Exchange Club who are working to end child abuse and to teach civics to our youth. We have a reconstituted Newport Beach Foundation focused on building a deep bench of leadership to step into those leadership roles throughout our community. These are the kinds of folks who turn saplings into oaks. Two years ago, when Duffy was mayor, he declared 2018 to be the year of the harbor. Well, 2020 will be known in Newport Beach as the Year of the Volunteer. I will challenge each of my colleagues to come up with five people or groups to honor at our city council meetings in the coming year. That will be at least 35 mini-ceremonies that highlight the best that our city has to offer. There is, of course, no shortage when it comes to finding the positive in our city. Simply spend time at Oasis, our animal shelter, our libraries, our schools. Our city runs on good intentions and actions, and it's as good a time as any to celebrate those great achievements. And to highlight this emphasis, we have with us tonight a person who has taken a talent for ukulele and brought together our community for decades. Tony, if you wouldn't mind coming up? Tony is 97 years old.
Ninety-eight in February.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kappa. So, no. So if you wouldn't mind, right there is perfect. I will come down to you, just to present this to you, I promise. So, Mr. Kappa, yep. So even though Mr. Whitaker violated that rule earlier, we're going to have you on the other side. This is one that I asked to present, and I appreciate immediate past mayor, I suppose, Dixon, for indulging me on allowing me to be the one who presents this. I'd like to read a few of the whereas clauses, if you don't mind, Mr. Kappa. For 27 years, Tony Kappa has devoted his volunteer hours at Oasis Senior Center, leading the ukulele singers and strummers group. And he learned of the group while attending a Corona Del Mar Christmas Walk in 1992 and soon after joined. And whereas Tony has led the group's performance at the annual Oasis Talent Show, having performed in it in the last eight years, which, by the way, Mr. Kappa, I just want to point out, I've taken both my children to that talent show, and they love it every year, so thank you for leading that. Whereas in 2019, at the age of 97, Tony retired from leading the Oasis Ukulele Singers and Strummers, now serving as their sergeant-at-arms. The group serves as a pillar in Oasis programs, having been around since 1979, and bringing in musicians from all parts of Southern California to gather and play music in a social setting. Now, therefore, I, Will O'Neill, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Tony Kappa for his many years of dedication and entertainment provided to the Oasis Senior Center and the city of Newport Beach. Mr. Kappa, congratulations. Now, I see you didn't bring your ukulele with you, so do you have a few words?
I do. I got a little verse that I'd like to recite. It's not as long as the ballad of "Reading Gold" that Oscar Wilde wrote. It's just a few lines. Say I'm sad, say I'm weary. Say that health and wealth have passed me. Say I'm old, then add this: My yuke has blessed me. Yes, it has. It brought me to an auspicious occasion here where you're the new mayor, and I got to see the other mayor retire. Anyway, it's been a great evening for me. And our Oasis is, just for your information, at Ukulele Group is the oldest organized ukulele group in the United States. And we have one other distinction. We had a young man come to our group. He was in high school. His parents had taken him over to the islands. Came home. He joined our ukulele group. And when he went to... He got... graduated high school. He got the first student scholarship for ukulele at UCLA. And so we've got a really distinctive group there. And we're pleased to be part of it. You folks have given us a wonderful place to play our ukuleles, as you know. Were there every Monday from 1:00 to 3:00. And lunches served just before that, so if you have a free Monday, you can come and get lunch and then watch our girls do the hula and hear us all play, and you'll have to sing along with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kappa.
Look right at me. Oh, don't say right. There we go. Go ahead and smile. One, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three.
All right. We have just one more item of business. It'll be quick, and then we'll celebrate. So, item number 15, designation of city's representatives under California Government Code Section 54957.6A. I'm going to go out on a limb and guess no one would like information. Seeing none. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any council comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Also move.
Seconded by Councilmember Duffy... Duffield. Let's vote.
I'll just have you raise your hands. All in favor? That was unanimous. Seven, zero.
All right. Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Councilmember Brenner, you have the adjournment tonight.
I do. I would like to adjourn the meeting this evening in honor of one of our longtime and treasured citizens who passed away in November. Kay Hunter Sandlin, wife of Steve Sandlin, has been a member of our community since 1976. She is the mother of Jennifer, Kathleen, and Scott. Kay was a leader in the local PTA and community organizations through her children's elementary and high school years. And that's where she and I became friends. She made many friends along the way, and she was the first to help out in time of need. Kay will be remembered for her warm and... Kaye will be remembered for her warm and caring home, where kids and parents were always welcome. Kaye was the wise one that family and friends would turn to for help, comfort, and advice. Her source of joy was her family, including grandchildren Kale, Charlotte, Audrey, and Lincoln. Kaye was a wonderful wife, wise and caring mother, and a faithful friend, and her spirit of love of life has touched us all. We will miss her. She was called Gaga by her, her family, and her legacy will live on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Brenner. We stand adjourned.